Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mark.
Excellent, okay, ready when you are.
Okay, so, all everybody to order then. Welcome to our April planning meeting today, Tuesday, 9th of April. First item in the agenda is 81923, declarations any disclose will procure your interest. Done, thank you. 82023, apologies for absence, please Karen.
The council's evidence. The same as you.
82123, the minutes, the confirmed minutes of the planning committee meeting on the 12th of March, which were received by full council on 26th of March. Are members happy for me to sign us as a true record?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. 82223, planning applications to consider. I'm handing over to Mark to take us through, if that's okay.
Thank you very much. So the first one, I'm not actually quite sure why you've got this because it's out in Crockston, but we've got installation operation of some solar panels. So if we could go on to the next page, please. They're fairly standard issue. So the panels, as I say, the particularly rural location near to Crockston Park itself. Are we able to, I'm just still seeing the first page there. Are we able to move, ah, yeah, we're moving. Yep, so you can see the location there as marked by the purple arrow right out, as I said, away from the town itself. Okay, next page, we'll move a little bit down, we can.
That's so much.
Yeah, oh, that's it, yeah, so again, purple arrow shows the location on the survey map there, near to the house. Okay, yeah, next picture.
Do you mind?
Yeah, again, it's a slight.
We just hold for, try and sway it a minute. Volume hit this end.
So.
It was just bouncing all the way around, so we have to, we did a test today and it was so loud, we turned it down now. Of course, irony is.
So do you need to sort of speak to get a level? Testing, one, two, three. Would it sort of help if I basically run through things a little bit while we're waiting? Or do you want me to keep quiet?
Just hold for Mark, while we try and sort the volume out.
Yeah, sure.
I'm going to death in a minute. Right, try again.
Okay, testing one, two, three, can you, can you hear the echo?
So you show this on the map where the site is.
Yeah, so slightly more detailed map at the top of that page, which shows the location of the wiring from the house. And again, as you can see, it's from the house, the link to the actual solar panels in the field there. Okay, next picture, please. As you can see from the design, it's a pretty, and indeed the picture below it, very, very standard issue looking solar panel. Nothing else really like so about that one, that's an example one rather than the actual one, but nevertheless. So as you can see from the text there, from their design and access statement, there's going to be some nice sort of biological landscaping in the sense of wildflower seeding for the area itself. And it is a sort of temporary structure in some senses at least, as in the, the structure or the frame that holds up the solar panels can be dismantled and so they won't leave any trace. Crockston Parish Council have also commented on this, literally to say, actually, no, specifically no comment. Environmental health are happy with it as long as there's a noise chest carried out. Back to you, Chair.
Yeah, I think just for members' benefit, I believe that this site, Crockston Park goes through Park Crockston and Park Thetford, that's why we're considering it.
Yeah, right.
Otherwise, we probably wouldn't have been had this tabled with us. But I presume, are we happy to support? Any objections?
As a general view, and this is just a general view, I prefer solar panels on the roofs of houses rather than on the ground. So I would, I would offer an opposition.
Agreed with Terry, I'm not happy with stuff like this.
So are we a supporter overall or objector?
I'd say supporter overall, I don't know.
Show of hands for support, please.
If I'm honest.
Against? Right, sorry. Are a supporter, any further comments? Do you want to add that, that we want to, we prefer to have them on the roof of buildings? Or do we happy just to leave it as is? Leave it as is? Right? We got support with no further comments then, please, Mark. Next one, please.
Thank you, so, yeah, the next one, if we could sort of move down to the, sort of the first image for that. So this is a change of use. It is on London Road and it's a, an industrial unit there. They're looking for, sorry, can we just go back slightly to the actual specifics of the change of use before we move on, thanks. So basically, at the moment, it is solely storage and distribution and they want to be able to add general industrial to that. There are the same sort of, nothing really is about the place is changing, same parking arrangements, six spaces including one disabled. They are looking basically to get a new occupier for the site and therefore want a little bit of flexibility about who uses it. They are requesting no restrictions on the hours of operation. Okay, if we could move on to the picture now. So you can see the site outline there along London Road. Yep, next one, please. And photograph shows there, and so the nearest housing would be sort of the top right of your picture. It's sort of, I say, a very familiar location to a lot of you, I'm sure, or to everyone, I'm sure. So, yeah, if we could say the next picture, I think, is, I think the next one's the actual, yeah, view of it. So we're looking at the area in between the brewer's paint place and the toilet and bathroom showroom. It's actually quite a small part of that building, but it's the sort of one, sort of curtain door and one person door, if you like. One little section between those two. Yeah, I think there might be one other thing, if we just move down slightly, I think that might be, yeah, that is the end of that, so, yeah. Yes, back to you, Chair, at that point.
So from a history point of view, I think this was general industrial anyway, before it's moved into retail as it is now. So I, you know, I understand the, just keeping the flexibility of the site to that. My observations are it's never overly full in terms of the car park there as it goes by. So I think, you know, if there is an increased demand from parking, I think that could be catered for by the existing site, so any other comments or do you want to go, David?
If you, if they have no restrictions on hours, potentially could turn it into fast food, gambling, whatever it comes to, there's so many more things that can be put on there, that we can have nailing businesses, pollution, mess, street mess.
Just to clarify that, they're not asking for retail, they are literally asking for just general industrial in addition to the current usage.
It's big space of general industrial and storage and distribution. For the moment, it's just got storage and distribution.
I can't think why anyone would want to amplify the amount of hours, but it's like, why? Why would they want that? I suppose that's not a planning objection, but I.
Right, I'll take that on board, see it from Stuart first.
I presume it's between brewers and.
Yes, it's the blank doorway there.
So it could be really here, what's, what are the plans for you now?
I don't think.
Want to make it more attractive to somebody going.
If it's more flexible space, you're allowed to let it to somebody, you know, might have a little fabrication shop in there or something like that, but I don't, not aware of anything.
You've got to be aware that if there's, if you open it up, then you start getting big lorries going into that bit of space. This could be horrendous to try and get in now onto that bit of road. It's a busy, busy done bit of road as it is anyway. So you've got to be careful what you want in there. You know, at the moment, it suits tool station brewers and the beast bathroom, but if you put a little fabrication unit, they have lorries going in there with heavy metal stuff to actually store it. Okay, so I would object to say that should stay almost like as a retail outlet.
And again, just to clarify, it's not retail that they've got there at the moment. In terms of position, the permission already exists for storage and distribution. So in terms of lorry use, that, that is still potentially a possibility with the current usage. It's not actu, perhaps surprisingly, given where it is, it's not actually got or requesting for retail.
Going back on that, the, whereas the storage and distribution, it's almost like opening yourself up for a small Amazon satellite depot, something similar to that.
That is what they currently got permission for.
What it's got.
Alan, we go back to the, to the.
The current permission, just hold on, Mark, we'll just clarify for Stuart's benefit. The current permission allows storage and distribution. They're proposing to change it from storage and distribution to a mixed flexible general industrial and storage and distribution. So.
Yeah, if we could, yeah, that's it.
Doug, you want to come in?
Yeah, just to ask question, 24 hour ability to use it, I forget the exact terms, was that a change? Or is that?
I think you said, the comment you made, they're not asking for, or there was no restriction on hours requested or stated. I presume that Breckland would still have the possibility of putting restrictions on the, on the hours subject, if, once they find out who's going in there. So if you've got somebody metal bashing, banging away, that they would then have to put hours on that. Or are we saying a metal basher could go in there now, work 24 hours a day once it's gone through?
That is, I think, their request, that they should potentially be allowed 24 hour operation. However, as I said, there's no, I mean, that would be, if you're thinking of a noise control issue, then it would be a matter for environmental health to comment if, if, as I said, such uses were considered. At this stage, what they are looking for, as I said, is, is they don't actually have a specific user, but they are asking for that flexibility at this stage. So potentially, I suppose, yes, is the answer to your question.
So we could cater the, by concerns, by stating that, you know, if we're happy to support, we would wish to have more time limit on the.
You could comment something like subject to noise control measures being in place. Perhaps we, if we could go back to the, can we go back to the picture, the aerial view, satellite view, actually? You might see where the nearest residential use is, yeah. Again, that, it's not immediately adjacent to a, to the nearest residential use, which would be just across the other side of the line of trees there. Although it's not, you know, it's not. So that, that might be worth considering, we ought to see where it is, as I said, relative to other, other land uses.
Can just hold you there, Mark, I've got Terry to come in.
Yeah, I've just had a, I've just had a look online actually on the application. And it says our opening hour is relevant to this proposal, yes. And they're asking for 24/7, so I think it is important if we do support it. I'm, I'm happy to support, I'd rather used and, you know, jobs and all the rest of it. But I do think we need to be mindful of that noise because, you know, there are people reasonably nearby.
Okay, does anybody else want to make a comment? I think we've probably got enough information to move to a vote on whether we want to support or object, but I'm conscious of our concerns in terms of the hours and the noises that residents. So are we happy to support in principle? Yep, okay, so an additional comment that we would like restrictions on the time operation. What are we going to suggest?
Isn't it restrictions in time pending what their use is?
Yeah, I think noise is much a concern, but obviously Stuart's made a point about, you know, traffic and what have you there.
No greater than the surrounding retail unit, you know, no.
Yeah.
Was greater than that would be reasonable.
So are we happy to say that we support, but we would wish that the hours of operation to be in, in, in line with the existing use of the buildings in that vicinity? Agreed.
You?
Thank you, okay, then, Mark, next one?
Thank you, yeah, when you're ready, Alan, if we go down to the next one. So 89 Red Date, this is a household, a single flat story, a flat roof extension at the rear of the house. If we can move down to the first map. So we're looking at the sort of area right in the middle of the red gate. It's not real estate, but one road that goes right round like that, yeah, if we can see the photo. So that is property in question and we're looking at an extension to the rear of that building. If we could go down to the plans, just below it. So, yeah, if you have a look outlined in red, there is the, the property boundary and you can see the red block of where the extension would be behind the house there. And if we head down to the next bit. So this shows the before and after, so right at the top of your screen there is the existing elevations and you can see the sort of pale stippled bit is the extension to a sort of oblong shaped extension going on to the rear of the building. So you don't actually, the reason why you don't see much change, there isn't a front elevation is because there wouldn't be any sort of visible change from the front elevation. So, yeah, if we go down to the actual existing plans. So the actual existing ground floor plan, it seems to have lost a little bit of it at the top there actually. It seems to have just got cut off a little bit there. But you're basically looking at the top of that is where the extension is going to be, which is the rear of the building. So if we could go down to the next one, I think we'll see the, the after. So, yeah, the extension is the area again, that's sort of got slightly pale red markings on there where it says dining area and day room. So again, as I say, it's at the top of your screen, but that's at the back of the building as things are. I think that might be the last thing, but can we just check if there's anything further on this one? Yeah, that's super, so, yeah, extension to the rear of that building, back to you, Chair.
Any other comments, we see a flat roof extension, which we always have our little papers there, but otherwise I can't say anything to object, so are we willing to support?
I think so, the only thing is, let's talk about materials used. It says that it has been agreed by whoever it was, heritage, something, highways and historic buildings. I think we say.
I think, I think the historic buildings and highways comments refers to the next one.
Oh, apologies, yes, you're absolutely right, I'll shut up.
Okay, just on that, plan back there, it does mention the, the buff brickwork, I think, of existing and then it's got light render there, which means it's a stippled type of effect, which obviously not ideal, but I don't think it's too bad. That's out of the bag, yeah.
The way, yeah, no one has to look at it.
So happy to support?
Yep.
Yeah. All right, Mark, over to you for the next one.
Okay, thank you, Chair, we are now on to, yeah, if we can go down to the next. Okay, yeah, so this is a change of use, I think this may be the one that was referred to earlier. So we're looking at 33 to 35 Guildhall Street. It's not actually in use as shop at the moment, but it is, that's its current official use. And this is the proposal of the conversion of the ground floor area, which was a retail space into a one, one bedroom flat. And these, as I said, there are no objections to this one from either highways or the historic buildings consultant, they have actually said they have no objection to it. So, yeah, picture of the building on the top right there, again, very familiar to you and the, the flan at the top there is just simply, as I said, it's basically an open space at the moment, existing retail space. And if we scroll down slightly, and again, I think this is the end of it, we'll see the plan of the proposed one bedroom flat, well, sort of, led to the one bedroom flat, which has, as I said, bedroom living area. So basically, yes, conversion of retail space as currently supposedly is into a one bedroom flat. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, I think this has been used for residential before it went to retail recently. So it's going back to residential thing. It's probably the limit of our retail area, which we all know is shrinking. So, you know, from that perspective, you're keeping your retail second historic core rather than having it at the end there. And given that demand for retail space is not exactly high, I think we've probably got other units in the town that could be filled if there was sufficient demand for it. But over to the floor, if anybody got objections, Terry, then, Mark.
Yeah, just three points. Firstly, I think it's actually a really poor quality living area. It's tiny and badly laid out for residential. So I don't disagree with what you're saying about it's not got that much of a future, I'm sure, as retail. But actually, it's a really unpleasant place to live for somebody, I would think. I can't see, and I looked on the website about amenity, anybody that lives there and I can't see anything where they've got any communal space, any sort of garden space or anything like that. And it says stall, I assume that's where the wheelie bin would go. I'd like us to comment specifically on wheelie bins and make sure there's some sort of condition that they're kept at the back rather than on the front of the street there because we're having issues in other locations. But it's a difficult one because I appreciate that it's life as retail is probably over and done with. But it just feels like a really poor quality residential arrangement.
Just on that point, Mark, do we have the plan to see with the rear access? Because it is the one that we've been receiving comments about, the new builders going in the yard back there. So I think that access from the backyard is relevant to obviously this application.
As far as I know, I can't, I didn't, I didn't actually see any access to the rear from this flat, as far as I can see. It, it doesn't seem to be sort of connected to the rear at all, but you may know more about the, the building if you've looked around the back than I do, perhaps. But as I say, it doesn't, it's certainly not showing from what I can see of the plans as any sort of access to the rear at all from this, it just seems to be access to the front.
Wheelie bins, I think is a very relevant point because they'll be on the, on the front deck. Mark, David then, Carla.
We've already mentioned bins, thank you, Terry, I think that's really important because that is on a heritage part of the town. You've also got parking out the front there and although that's double yellow lines, that's increasingly getting used as parking along there. I believe, and I'm not sure, that the upstairs is already residential.
Yes, I believe that.
Yeah, so that means we've now got somebody living above that little tiny place as well. So my concerns are, it's, it's kind of in an overdeveloped position with no facilities available to because of the rear access, that's my worry. Thank you.
David then, Carl.
And, yeah, for me, places like that, I have seen them in working life. They. damp, moistened condensation is horrific in places like that. It's a dog of internal walls, bathroom is fully internal walls, the kitchen is built against a solid wall. You know, condensation, a couple of years down the line, it's a new town. For anybody living there, that's, that's shocking building layout. And I would be very strongly against that.
Just want to mention, it's described as a one bedroom apartment, but really there's no division between the living area and the kitchen. So it is a studio, as far as I'm concerned, with a, with a sleeping area attached to it. Being such a small, I pointed quite rightly so that with people living above, you know, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, I would imagine it's gonna be difficult to live in such a small building. The height of the building on the ceiling is quite low. It is a very compact area to live in. And, and plus the, the issues of out of the rubbish and parking, which is more people ramming in a small space, more people to adjust to what is bothering where those students. I just think they're trying to put a whole lot in a very little space, that's my opinion.
So am I sensing we want to object? Show of hands to object, please. Thanks.
I think overdevelopment, the lack of amenity space, concerns about inadequate bin storage and collection arrangements and a lack of parking. I think those would be the four objections.
Happy with that? Okay, thank you, Mark, on to you, next one.
Thank you, Chair, right, if we can just head down to, on your screen. We are looking at, on to lates now, so on to the next item, if that's okay?
Yep.
Yep, so there is nothing, no lates as far as I've understood it, unless Alan's got anything that's been very, very late, but I certainly haven't seen anything.
He's not, he's asleep, so, yeah.
Right, okay, if we could just, yeah, as I was going to say, if we can just go back slightly further, that's, so we're, we're on to the next item. So we are looking at, first of all, a discharge of conditions there with regard to Thetford Health Centre. And this is, it's got some extras of the parking space going in and they are required to have a biodiversity net gain. So their proposal has been to install three SWIFT boxes at the time of the original planning application, which was the extension of the car park and the lift shaft. The Thetford Towns Council's comment was that it was concerned about the loss of green amenity space, so prefer to see lost space provided elsewhere. They have, in this application, after asking to fulfill the condition of the net gain for biodiversity by putting in the SWIFT boxes. If we could just go, as you can see, the, the area in question for the car park and the actual building is marked there. And if we have a look down there, you can see the, the yellow and green dots are the proposed position of the SWIFT boxes. Their first choice being the yellow, second being the green. If we just scroll down, there's a little bit more detail on this. Just shows again where those would be, shows you what it would look like. An actual SWIFT box and it shows the position on the building there. So as I said, it's, I have to tell you, there is no scope, apparently on the website, there seems to be no scope for comments to be issued through the website at this stage. So really, you are being just asked to note this at this stage. Although I guess if you wish to use other channels, you might wish to communicate any feelings you have on the subject, but as I said, there is, this is a, a request to discharge the condition that's been put on the planning application. As I say, this seems to be, there doesn't seem to be scope for a comment via the usual process. Back to you, Chair.
Basically, just to note, did Matt come in?
It, it would appear so, yeah.
I just wondered if we could go back to the overall picture of the, from above. That's just one more, that one there. So the reason I point that one out is because I think that they've been pretty cheap in getting away with a bit of biodiversity in this by putting three SWIFT boxes in and we're going to lose essentially a football pitch worth of grass. There isn't any provision for any trees along here, they're leaving that, they're not even moving that bit of gravel there. So that's still going to remain as spurious parking. And what's happened now is this has become a roadway that's become going around. So we're actually losing all of that grass into a muddy site. It would have been brilliant if they could have just put, you know, a few trees down the side there to at least soften the blow of all the trauma they've put in over the last six months.
Alan, you want to come in, or Terry?
Flowers, I mean, it seems like a bit of an outfit trade, a big patch of grass, quite three little SWIFT boxes on the building. And I just don't see how one is equivalent or balances out the other. And it did make a good point, they'll be driving around, so there will be a mud patch. So I don't, I don't see how one will take away from the other.
Very mad.
And I actually looked it up, it's 1,276 square metres of car park. And if they think three SWIFT boxes is sufficient for that loss, then they can think again. I don't know how we can, but I think Alan or Mark should contact them and say that, you know, 20 bits worth probably of SWIFT boxes is not nearly sufficient. And can we have some more boxes? And Max's point about trees, I think is very valid, very valid.
We've got Matt, Doug, I think you played one.
Yeah, I stole my words, to be honest, I almost feel a little bit offended that it's like, we're going to lose X amount of space, but we've put up three SWIFT boxes, so we're offsetting it. It, it borders on almost offensive, I think, in terms of.
It's a bit insulting.
It's an insult, it is an insult.
Doug, good info.
Right, Doug, at the same point, it just seems like laughing, it sort of appears it is a bit DIY, to often take a couple of buckets on. So, yeah, we can find a way to respond to it, I think we should.
Very. Onwards, Mrs. Southburn. Yep.
Chris. Just as a comment, quite amazingly, we subtly designed to complain there, using all the great spaces. That might have helped me live in second because they've got the SWIFT box here. Why do we fight when we lost a football pitch up there? I might have heard the living sector because they've got the swift box in. Why do we fight when we lost a football pitch up there?
Well. I think a number of us have contemplated in the past about the loss of managed recreation space and the under provision of managed recreation space. And so we still complain about that. What we have in front of us is a discharge. The only thing we can do at this point is fire off a letter to say that we feel that it's an adequate compensation by putting the swift boxes in place, which I suggest that we do. Okay, then, Mark, I think you've got another discharge one coming up again.
Yes, we do. Um, so when you're ready, Alan. So, yeah, this one is, uh, Dear's Leap, uh, of, uh, because, uh, has become an old people's home or a care facility. Um, this is again, a couple of discharge conditions. You can actually make comments on this, uh, as far as I can see from the website. There are two, uh, conditions that are placed on them. Firstly, for an anti vibration mount on the substation, so riding the power. Uh, so to dampen that down, uh, they have supplied proof of compliance with this in the form of a photograph of the item in question. I'm afraid this is well beyond my technical expertise to know whether that's an adequate, uh, anti vibration mount or not. But there is a photo of it to say that they have actually put one in place. Uh, do you want to talk about that or shall I move on to the other condition from the same?
Just go hand up, Mark. You can just hold fire, Doug.
I don't have this counter, that's actually a good interest, but my wife works there, so I realise I should just, I don't know if I should mention that or not.
Cool. I don't, I don't think we're probably going to make a comment anyway. Um, I don't think we're in a position to say that that's vibrations, so I think it, just have to note that one, I think.
Yeah.
I've, I've worked in areas where there are, um, there are sort of large machines that do vibrate. Um, that is not an anti vibration mount. That's just a bit of material they've stuck underneath it. It would need some form of mechanical damping to be effective.
Do we want to, David?
Following up from what you were saying. Could we get some kind of engineering report or whatever to say that does comply with what you said in that?
Of Breckland, we're not the planning authority.
Right. Yeah, no, that, yeah, that would be a matter for Breckland to, to assess the, the technical spec of it. As I say, I'm afraid it's beyond me, but, uh, if you, if you wish to sort of, um, it, it is possible, as I said, to make a, a comment or a request at this stage, but, um, yeah, it would be Breckland who would be making that decision, definitely.
I, I think it'd be, you've got the opportunity to make the comment because the, uh, it says the insurance transfer was installed in accordance with UK power network standards, uh, including certain online requirements, that we would wish that that technical spec had been followed.
Yeah.
If we can put that request in, uh, under our comments.
So you would wish that the technical spec had been followed?
Yes, yeah. I, I think a photograph showing a couple of bits of material.
You don't know they're bits of wood or whatever, do you? Say, on to the next one then.
Uh, yeah, okay. So if we just go down slightly, and again, this is, this is a largely technical matter that, um, I'm afraid I, as, again, would be beyond my, uh, you know, scope of being able to say to you whether, uh, there's not, it's my job to express an opinion on whether it's adequate or not, but, um, this is a topsoil check. So previously they have done checks on the existing soil on the site. And there's now been a report issued referring to the additional, uh, spoil or topsoil brought onto the site for landscaping purposes. So this is, uh, as you can see, there's been a sort of, a lot of, um, topsoil brought on to provide that sort of extra garden area um, with plants. And so they've sent through some pictures of the samples being taken. And it has gone to a lab and come back, uh, officially clean. Um, uh, again, as I said, I, I, I couldn't tell you whether the lab is reputable, whether the samples are adequate. Um, but that is the proof supplied, um, and, uh, as I said, is again likely to be a technical decision for Breckland. But you have got the scope to make a comment if you wish. Back to you, Chair.
Happy to know? Okay, thank you. Knowing the soil on that site, I think they do need to drop sort of make anything grow. Okay, um.
Yeah, so variances again, unless anything's coming very last minute, I'm not aware of any further items of, uh, decisions of variance.
Yeah, Andy just knows the, nine planning decisions have been made since last meeting. There were no variances. So then we're on to 2623, I believe, on our agenda, which is the to refer to the Great Thetford Partnership. Did you actually be at the meeting, Mark?
Yes, if you had, uh, if there's nothing further I can do for you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I will depart at this point and leave you to your next items.
See you next one.
Thank you very much.
Holiday at the moment, isn't it?
He's a holiday. So 82633, have we got anything that we wish to be referred to the Great Thetford Partnership? No. Okay. 82723, community engagement. Is there anything that we want to make comment or draw attention to? No. So 82823, with the office, Alan.
I have one. Um, finally, we've been able to get hold of Breckland planning. We have two dates to do the session one. If you remember, session one was just the outline of planning. And the session two would be when we'd go through and interrogate some of the planning decisions, which had been decisions of variance. We had learned from them what we, what we could have done better. So for the session one training, we've got two dates, 25th of April, which is the Wednesday, or the first of May. Sorry, Thursday, the 25th of April or Wednesday, the first of May, from six to eight P M.
References. Okay, can you say the dates again?
Thursday, the 25th of April from five, six to eight P M, or Wednesday, the first of May, from six to eight P M.
I love full council.
Full council was 30th of April.
Oh, it's not that. A date's wrong. Either rules.
This is just, we, we could do both if you liked. A little bit of test, a little bit of training.
I think if you email them out and see who's available for each, and if you've got a good number, run both. But if not, just do it on one night.
Okay. We can send a response to Alan then, that's okay.
Yeah, I'll send out an email this evening in the morning.
Thank you. All right, thank everybody for attendance.
Let's switch off the recording.